Good morning and welcome to our virtual business meeting, October 8th, 2020. And I'm going to turn it over to Gary to do a roll call.
Thank you Chair. First staff support today Christina Twiliger, Clerk to the Board, Stephen Madcor, County Council. Roll call Chair Bernard.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Mr. Humberson. You're muted Commissioner Humberson.
We muted you.
Here.
All right, with that, please join me in a pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We're holding this meeting virtually. If you've joined us on Zoom app for this meeting and you are interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. You will have the option of providing your comments to us live. Alternatively, anyone can send a comment to be read during the citizen communication portion of our meeting by emailing bcc@clackamas.us. Be sure and include your name and the area which you live. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Gary.
Yes, we'll start with wildfire update. We have Nancy Bush, Director of Disaster Management and Incident Commander for the Emergency Operations Center to present. Go ahead, please Nancy.
Yeah, thank you. Good morning, everyone. So we'll start out just with a briefing on each of the fires that we still have going here in Clackamas County. The Riverside Fire again is 138,054 acres. That containment is 57% and they still have 326 personnel working on that fire to do the containment and the mopping up there. Beechey Creek Fire has 193,453 acres. They are 62% contained. A lot of that isn't here in Clackamas County. And there's a total of 194 personnel working on that particular fire from the federal teams. We do still continue to see a lot of smoke coming out of both of those fires. So we just want to make sure that the public and residents understand that you are going to continue to see smoke. That does not mean that they are growing. It just means that there's still a lot of hotspots that are especially internally. And depending on the weather, there just may be more smoke from time to time. At Beechey Creek Fire, though, they also have some helicopters that are starting to come into delivering water droplets and completing some of those missions there. So if you're in that area, you actually may see some helicopters going over with water as well. A couple of things I just want to cover that we're working on here in the Emergency Operations Center. One of those and the most important at this point is our right-of-entry form. I just want to make sure everyone understands that the right-of-entry form must be completed by the homeowner if they have had a fire and they have household hazardous material that is there on the property, which could be anything from ash, you could have asbestos, you know, other things from the household fire that is considered hazardous materials. And to have that cleaned up from the DEQ and Clackamas County and working on that. If you want to take advantage of that, again, you have to do the right-of-entry form. You can go to clackamas.us/wildfires and click on the right-of-entry form there. Or our Resource Center is, we are extending the hours and days, will be open next week, Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. The forms must be completed by October 16th. So please make sure that if you want that to happen for you, or if you have any questions about that all, you can visit the Resource Center or go online. And also, there's an email there that you can send an email into and ask some questions.
There with Nancy?
Yes, sir.
That is free.
That is correct. For the household hazardous waste, it is free. So if the homeowner wants to clean it up themselves, that's okay, but you have to pay for that yourself. If you want to take advantage of the program at no cost to the owner, you must do the right-of-entry and sign up for the program. Thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you.
Also, just want to mention that we're going to be having a virtual community meeting this evening at 5:00. That will be on Facebook Live and it also will be recorded and you'll be able to see the recording at a later time. Both myself and Chair Bernard will be participating in that particular call this evening. So we invite everyone to take a look at that and watch that as well if you have time. And that is my wildfire update for now.
Thank you Nancy. Next, Gary is Jeffrey Muns.
Yes, please bring Jeff in the room. We have for you Commissioners' approval of a board order declaring a state of emergency and declaring emergency measures for abatement of hazardous waste and debris removal. Jeffrey Muns from County Council to present.
Yes, thank you and good morning. This requested, or this emergency declaration is requested by the Office of Emergency Management for the State, the DEQ, as well as a contractor working with the State on these efforts to clean up debris and hazardous waste that is now on the properties where the fires occurred. It's important to declare the emergency to support the, you know, the federal funding under FEMA as well as the program that Nancy just spoke about with the right-of-entry agreement. This, as we talked about this matter earlier in the week, you had some suggestions to change the title to focus this emergency declaration on this process of abating hazardous waste and debris removal. And that's what we've done, changed the title to make it separate from the other emergency declarations that you have declared. This declaration will allow for the immediate efforts to address these risks, this hazardous waste that is present on those properties. Obviously, these risks are increased by the coming rainy season, which we want to avoid washing these materials into our waters. And that's obviously very important for the protection of our environment, but also everyone's health who relies on those waters as well as people going back to the properties to begin the process of rebuilding and moving forward. It's also critical to support the recovery of our counties, we recover from these fires, to have this hazardous waste out of the way so that the rebuilding and the removal of this other debris can proceed. So with that, this document is declared under ORS 401 to accomplish the efforts to get on the properties and to take care of these, the work that needs to be done. And it is set to run for 90 days, the way we have it set up, because as we understand, it's going to take at least, you know, 30 to 60 days to do the work. And the folks want to get on there immediately, but it's going to take a little bit longer than that for the entire process to work its way forward. So happy to answer any questions.
I don't see any questions, so I'll entertain a motion.
It's been moved to second that we approve a board order declaring a state of emergency and declaring emergency measures for abatement of hazardous waste and debris removal.
Second. It's been moved to second that we approve a board order declaring a state of emergency and declaring emergency measures for abatement of hazardous waste and debris removal. Any further discussion? Christina, would you call us, please?
Commissioner Fisher?
Commissioner Fisher says aye.
Commissioner Humberson?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader? Oh, your mic's on Commissioner Schrader. Or mics off, I should say.
Aye.
Thank you. And Chair Bernard?
Aye, motion carries unanimously. But I have another question for Nancy. Is this also, not this measure, but the right-of-entry also includes FEMA entry? Or is it just hazardous waste?
So there are two right-of-entry forms. One of them, and I understand there's a high pitched noise coming, I apologize, I'm not sure what it's about. But there's two. One of them is for hazardous, household hazardous waste. And then we do have another one, I could look at Mr. Muns too, to talk about this as well. We do have another one if we decide that we are going to assist the homeowners to do cleanup of the other ways, that they will also sign as well. So we do have two of them.
Okay, my next question is, if you clean up on your own, and it's hazardous, and you take it to the Oregon City site or any other site, there's a form you have to fill out that says this is not hazardous waste. But, so how would you do that? I mean...
What we recommend is that they actually do have a professional company come in and do it.
Okay.
Yeah. They really, it's very toxic, obviously, the ash and everything. So everything we say is if you do it yourself, we recommend you have a professional company come in.
All right. Thank you. All right.
Jim, I have a question.
Yes.
Very quickly, it just occurred to me that, I'm afraid we will also have people that may choose to collect up the hazardous waste and go find a place in the hills to dump it, unfortunately. So I think that we need to be prepared with our Dump Stoppers program to see what we can do to head that off, if at all possible.
Yes, thank you for that. We've actually had some of those conversations already because we really want, do want, we do not want that to happen. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Gary, what's up next? Thank you Nancy and Jeff.
Next, moving on to COVID-19 updates, we have Nancy again and Dr. Sarah President, our Clackamas County Health Officer, to provide you an update.
All right, thank you. I'm going to have Dr. President, I think, talk a little bit about the metrics in a moment. Before that, I do want to mention that Commissioner Fisher did ask on Tuesday about OSHA and the fines. And I said I would find out what is going on. I've been trying to find out what's going on. With that, I don't have an answer for the Commissioners at this time. Because we, yeah, we've been contacting them, saying, and asking them some of those questions. So as soon as we can close that loop, I will do that. And I'll turn it over to Dr. President to go over the measures.
Good morning, everybody. I will, I am actually going to be brief today. I know that in the past I've said that, and then I take quite some time. But Christina, if you want to pull up the reopening metrics, please. I'm just going to review the reopening metrics dashboard and the school reopening dashboard. There has not been a lot of change in the last week. You can see here on our reopening dashboard that the tri-county region is meeting four of the six metrics. The ones that we are not is the percent positivity and the percent of cases not traced to a known source in the last seven days. Again, I think that we've had a lot of questions about the percent positivity and how much that really needs to inform our reopening. And we're having many conversations with OHA and even the Governor's Office around whether these, whether and how we may be adjusting these. I think she mentioned in the press conference on Tuesday that they were looking to reconsider some of the school reopening metrics. And I think there's just a, we're at a point that case counts have been fairly flat for quite some time. They are increasing right now. There are some new projections out and all of them show some increase in case counts. But really kind of reevaluating the situation and trying to figure out if what we're following is, is the right thing to be following and if there are any changes that we can make. So I don't have answers for you on that, but I can just assure you that we're continuing with regional conversations and conversations with our state partners. Down towards the bottom of the screen, you can see Clackamas. Again, the uptrend in percent positivity, as well as an uptrend in the case, percent of cases not traced to a known source or the sporadic cases. Not a huge difference, though. That has, that has remained fairly stable over time. Last week, we did have a bit fewer cases. Next week, you're likely going to see an increase in the new cases in the last seven days. I don't have this confirmed, but my, our COVID team let me know there were somewhere near 40 new cases yesterday. If that's the case, that would be an all-time high for our county in one day. And we've had definitely above 20 every day this week. So we are seeing an uptick. And I think the main, the main concern is ongoing staffing challenges. I think we talked about that last week as well. And the increase in cases is really across the board. Almost every case requires a workplace exposure notification. So the majority of these cases are, are people who are out in the workforce at some point. So we've had a few outbreaks that were presented on the, we've had three outbreaks this week that were, that were published. But there, we are, we're continuing to have sort of small clusters in workplaces, long-term care facilities, household and social contacts. So no big changes. Christina, if you'd like to scroll down, we can look at Multnomah and Washington Counties here. All right, there's Multnomah, and they are not meeting three of the metrics. Again, they have increased percent positivity, increased sporadic cases, but downtrend in cases last week. I'm not sure what theirs looks like this week. And then Washington County, similar increase in sporadic cases. Again, none of these are huge increases, they're mild. And then they have an increase in their case numbers last week. There was something I was about to say about that. Oh, I don't have the data for you. I would like to put something together perhaps for next week if you're interested around the age groups that our new cases are. I think you may have heard around the state and certainly in Washington County, they've presented some data that the 20 to 30-year-olds is the highest rate of cases right now. And in just a brief look at our data yesterday, that looks to be similar in Clackamas. Really, 20 to 30, 30 to 40, and 40 to 50 are kind of the highest age ranges in that order, 20, 30 being the highest of the new cases. I don't have the percent or the change over time. So that's something I'd like to try to get better data for you, perhaps next week. Christina, if you want to pull up the school reopening dashboard, and I'm happy to take any questions on this before we move to the school, if you'd like.
I don't see any questions.
Okay, great. So, school reopening dashboard, they are continuing to hold the test positivity as a metric for school reopening. We still do not meet the case rate for 100,000, although we did get down in the 30s last week. I do anticipate that to be higher again this week. We are working a lot with our schools on, you know, ensuring that all of the processes are in place for as safe as possible reopening when they do plan to do that. Some of the schools in the wildfire districts have an extra exception, but I don't have an update on their plans at this point. I know that our nurses had a meeting with school district nurses yesterday and just really, you know, they've been meeting a few times to just talk through what would happen in different situations so that we are ensuring we have a good communication. And Philip Mason Joyner and I have met with the school administrators as well, so that we're all prepared to address any COVID-related issues as schools do reopen. So we have really good communication with our school partners, primarily in the, the public school districts. And we're working, working hard on increasing our communications with our private schools as well. So the process is going well, we're just not quite meeting the metrics. And as you heard on the, you may have heard on the press conference, there may be some changes in the metrics, but I can't give you any preview on what that will be at this point. And that's all I have for you guys today.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Paul?
Yeah, I do have one. And Dr. President, listening to the news that Oregon's going to get a lot of this new rapid testing for COVID, and knowing that's going to affect, I won't say skew the numbers or the metrics, but it's certainly going to affect the numbers. My question is, is it a belief that we are under-testing or we are severely under-testing? Or how is our testing capacity, how's that look today?
Yeah, so I think that our testing capacity is adequate. People seeking testing may, not everybody may want to get tested at this point. And that's a different issue compared to our capacity. The rapid binax now testing that will be distributed is pretty exciting. And we're still working on the plan for how to distribute our allotment throughout the county. You know, ideally, if we had a rapid point-of-care test that we could do frequently for sort of surveillance in higher-risk populations, then we're going to get a better sense of when we have new outbreaks. We're going to have better, earlier information to control, to control clusters. And, you know, you could say in an ideal world, we would test the entire population once a week so that we could really identify where the, where the disease is and control the spread. That's not realistic, but if we do have possibilities with these rapid tests to potentially increase surveillance in some other vulnerable populations. So we're working on that. And I think that overall, that helps, that helps, the more testing we do, the more quickly we'll find small clusters and be able to control them. So it will be helpful. The details of it are still being worked out. And whether we're under-testing is, I think everybody who has symptoms, who seeks a test right now can find one. We're working on increasing access for asymptomatic contacts as another way of more rapidly identifying positive cases. So I think that the actual testing, the numbers of tests available is enough. People's availability to get to those tests is what we are actively working on.
Okay. And my, my last comment, I guess, or maybe question and comment, is that I got my flu shot yesterday. And I know it's obviously advised that not your susceptibility, perhaps, you know, to get COVID, if you've got the flu or whatnot, or the complications thereof can be, you know, perhaps deadly. So is there any, is there any indication of what that spike anticipation, of what that spike might look like for those who didn't get a vaccination or those who get the flu? Same question, same, same thing, but more than different.
So, let me see if I understand your question correctly. If having the, if getting influenza increases your risk of severe COVID, is that your question?
Yeah, and complications. I mean, I know it's been anticipated that there's, it could be very severe if the flu is not, kind of, you don't get in front of the flu and the outbreaks. But do we have anything yet to make what that might look like here in any real numbers? I mean, well, not real, it's not real till it happens. But, you know, I know there's anticipation it could be really, really bad, and it could be, it could be not so bad. But is there any sense of what, what it might look like for us in the coming months?
The ultimate answer is no. I, so as of October 1st, Oregon Health Authority has started their annual flu surveillance. So there are Sentinel sites that do specific testing for influenza as a way of sort of identifying when the flu season starts and what flu rates are. We are pushing that, you know, starting soon, we should encourage medical providers to test for both influenza and COVID. We saw in the spring or winter when this started, that many people actually were co-infected, had both. And that certainly increases your risk of having severe complications from that. We know that every year, our hospital capacity gets taxed by influenza. We also know that the precautions that everyone is taking for COVID also protect against spread of influenza. And so there is some hope that the flu season may not be as bad because people are taking precautions against COVID. But as of now, we have not seen influenza in Oregon. I think there's been only one case in October so far, which is very low. Our flu season normally starts anywhere between October and December. So surveillance has begun. We have weekly calls with regional healthcare systems around COVID. It initially started as a flu call to, to make sure that we are addressing hospital availability as well as flu numbers. And we have officially restarted talking about flu every week in addition to COVID. So nothing yet. We're hoping for a lot of people to get their flu vaccines so that the strain on the hospitals and the overall burden of respiratory disease is as minimal as possible. And also, if you do have symptoms of the flu, we encourage you to talk with your medical provider because flu, as opposed to COVID, does have a fairly effective treatment. Tamiflu works pretty well at decreasing severe disease. So if you feel sick, check in with your doctor and hopefully they'll test you for both.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Karen and then Sonya?
Two related questions. Are you having discussions regarding different metrics going forward than the ones we are currently obliged to attempt to achieve? And differential standards for certain kinds of employers, i.e. congregate living facilities, might have very different standards than, say, a restaurant where you have outdoor dining opportunities? That would help us move a little bit further down the road towards opening
Yeah, I don't know, Chair Bernard, if you want to, to update on any conversations. Not much has happened since last week when we were discussing options of a Phase 1B, really focusing on what we know about safety versus sector specifics. I don't have any follow-up on that at this point. Chair Bernard, if you'd like to address some.
Yeah, I mentioned this on Tuesday, that the governor agrees that we need to take a look at the metrics. A situation that, like you described, let's say it's a bowling alley or live theater. Where are, where are we getting the cases? And where we're not? And what they're doing to prevent increased cases? We're looking at those things and trying to apply that towards changing the metrics slightly, or allowing certain businesses to open in some way and others not, depending upon where the cases are coming from. So that's what they're working on. But it's still, you know, it's, it's at least a couple weeks away. And then as soon as they tell us they're ready, then we will be getting, we'll have that discussion with the chairs, the tri-chairs and, and the governor, and figure out what, what some of the possibilities are. That's basically where we're at. We're working on it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you Chair Bernard. I am curious where, if we know, I know you listed long-term care facilities, workplaces for the, for the outbreaks. Do we know more about what type of workplaces? I'm just, I'm noticing that there is some confusion regarding office spaces and people are going back to work more. And there is confusion over what's required as far as mask wearing in offices. They may be small offices, may not be very large. They're not, the governor listed out in her guidance, certain businesses, indoor businesses very clearly. And then there are a whole lot of other types of businesses that are included there. So I'm just wondering if there needs to be more clarity regarding what expectations are.
Thank you. I, I would agree with you. I think that we have, we, the tri-county health officers have talked with OHA around some increased need on safety information for private office spaces in particular, other indoor workplaces. When you look at the spread in workplaces, it's, it's across the board. It's every sector. I really haven't been able to pick out sort of one sector that's, that's more, that's having more transmission than others. It really comes down to, you know, proximity of people to other people, numbers of people in an enclosed space, and ventilation. And we don't have a lot of details around ventilation. But, but at the same time, an indoor space that has very poor ventilation is, there may be a higher risk than if it doesn't. than if it doesn't. And I really encourage everyone to be wearing face coverings while at work if they're working with other people outside their households.
Is the guidance that staying six feet apart indoors, is that still a good guideline? If you're at your home or in a, in a smaller office space?
Yeah, it absolutely is. Yes, it is. You know, I know that the CDC has, has updated their transmission guidance to bring in the, the role of airborne transmission a little bit more. We do know that there have been certain places where even with six feet distance, there has been transmission. But at the same time, those tend to be poorly ventilated places where people are there for a prolonged period of time doing something that, you know, expels particles into the air more, like singing or coughing or talking very loudly, those sorts of things. But generally, the respiratory droplets, is these still, it's still considered the primary source of transmission? Therefore, those don't go much, those don't go more than three feet to six feet. So that six-foot distance is still recommended and still is an important part of, of protecting yourself from transmission.
So if, say for instance, our commission decided we wanted to do an indoor retreat and we were all six feet apart or more, would we have, would we need to wear masks? Or would it be safe to not wear masks in that situation?
I'd probably encourage you to go ahead and wear masks. There's, there's no zero risk right now that I can, that I can assure of. I think if you are outdoors, look at the wind direction. I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to say that's 100% safe. And I do recommend, I do recommend fit masks when you're interacting with others outside your household.
And then I have another kind of, kind of off question. I think I know the answer. We had a District 8 meeting yesterday and we talked a lot about our safety net. We talked, and District 8, for those who might be listening, is the Association of Oregon Counties, Motloma, Washington, Clackamas County. I received a lot of information about suicide prevention and suicide is increasing with this pandemic. And there's a tremendous need for data because apparently I've learned that the suicide is recorded in the jurisdiction where the suicide occurs. And that just brought to my mind, well, with the data with COVID, are we sure that the data that we're getting to track all these numbers are the place where the test is done? Is the place where the person resides? How are we tracking that data?
Our COVID case data is based on the home residence address of the case. So oftentimes, you know, we are having many cases who are being tested, say, college kids in Lane County or in Benton County, and we still get those reports. We investigate those cases as, as residents of Clackamas, if that is their residence. But as far as any outbreak evaluation, we pass that off to the county where the exposure occurred.
All right, I don't see any other questions. Thank you all very much. Dr. President, good to see you again. And Nancy. All right, Gary.
Before we leave COVID, I want to share with you commissioners, I signed two contracts on your behalf under the COVID-19 emergency declaration, seeking your ratification of that today. What I signed were, on October 1st, 2020, I signed for the Disaster Management Department, extension of the rental of the Alton L. Collins Retreat Center, where the county is currently housing COVID-19 positive and medically fragile individuals. The agreement includes an addition of $51,000 to the existing contract with a total new contract value of $171,595 that the county is paying for the use of this center. The end date of the agreement was also extended from October 4th, 2020 to a new end date of December 30th, 2020. This is entirely funded with disaster management funds and will be reimbursed with CARES Act funding. The second contract is, I signed this morning, actually, October 8th, 2020, for Health Housing and Human Services. It is for Amendment Number 5 to an intergovernmental agreement between the county and the State of Oregon Housing and Community Services Department to replace previously awarded COVID-19 State Rent Relief Funds with COVID-19 Rent Assistance Relief CARES Act Funds and Requirements. These funds will provide direct rental assistance to eligible low-income individuals and households impacted by COVID-19. The previous grant award was $457,097, which are state funds coming to Clackamas County. And so the money is the same, no addition of the funds, it's just changing the purpose of the funds. And these funds will be subject, subject to CARES Act reimbursement requirements. No general fund is involved. So commissioners, I'm seeking your ratification of these two contracts I signed on your behalf.
I, I just have a question. And Gary, you adequately covered the fact that these expenses are covered by the CARES Act funding. My, my question is, when does the CARES Act funding expire? And/or is it really, when do we run out of money? And I go, I know that's gone through the state and we are really on reimbursement status. I'm just curious, is, does anyone, and maybe that's a question that can be answered next week, but I am curious to where we stand and what our capacity is. Knowing that maybe the worst with the flu and everything else coming, that the need for resources might actually grow substantially.
I think we may be able to answer it now, but I'll ask Nancy.
Yes, I can answer that now. So the CARES Act money that we're getting, that we turn in money for, or turn into our reimbursement, that ends on December 30th. So that big block, and then there's that big block that the state also received. And that all, right now, sunsets, or it has to be spent by December 30th. So I know that Congress has been talking about extending that, but that has not been done. But then there's also some CARES Act funding, like through our CDBG grants and ESG grants that actually can go through 2021. But the CARES Act, like we're running the EOC on, you know, for CARES and, you know, the, the other things that we're doing for the businesses, that all ends on December 30th.
Thank you.
Originally was $15 million, wasn't it? That the state set aside for Clackamas County?
Yeah, it was around 16 million. That is correct.
Yeah, and so that's kind of our limit to our bank account. And, and so we'll use that up. And then hopefully there'll be an extension or we'll likely use that up. All right, thank you. All right, so I'll entertain a motion.
Chairman, I move to ratify the decision.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded that we ratify the two contracts that Gary signed. Any further discussion? All right, Christina, please poll us.
Chair Fisher?
Chair Fisher votes aye.
Commissioner Humbirdston?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader? Your mic's off, Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
And Chair Bernard?
Well, and what did you call, Sonia?
Commissioner Fisher?
I thought you said Chair Fisher.
You've been saying Chair Fisher. Oh, maybe my mic is just cutting out, but I, I.
It's totally good. I will clarify. If anybody says my name wrong or title, I will make sure that I.
All right, so motion carries unanimously. Let me see. All right, the next item, Gary?
Yes, great, thank you, Nancy, thank you very much. You may move, go on if you wish. Next commissioners, reading an adoption of a previously approved land use ordinance. This is adoption of a previously approved comprehensive plan map amendment and zone change application. Nate Boderman from the County Council's Office will present.
Thank you, Gary, and good morning, commissioners. The item this morning is to adopt an order related to a proposed change to the county's comprehensive plan map and zoning map on property located at 23020 and 23340 Southeast Eagle Creek Road. Specifically, this order will include a comprehensive plan amendment from rural to rural industrial and a zone change from rural residential farm forest five acre to the rural industrial zone. All this to facilitate ongoing industrial operations that are occurring on these properties. The Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this matter on August 24th, 2020, and voted 9-0 at that time to recommend this board approve these amendments. This board then held a public hearing on this on September 16th, 2020, considering the application at that time and the recommendation that was made by the Planning Commission. At the meeting that happened just a few weeks ago, this board voted 5-0 in favor of approving the application as recommended by the Planning Commission and staff. The board then directed staff to prepare the findings and to draft in order to finalize that oral decision. So the order before you today will approve the amendments to the comprehensive plan and zoning map that I just described. Planning staff has included findings supporting this decision, and those are attached as an exhibit to the order. Certainly staff's recommendation that you adopt this order, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions to make? Nate, I don't see any, so with that, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt previously approved comprehensive plan map amendment and zone change application as previously approved at the September 16th, 2020 land use hearing.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt previously approved comprehensive plan map amendments and zoning chain application, change application as previously approved in the September 16th, 2020 land use hearing. Any further discussion? Christina, please poll us.
All right, we're going to do this correctly now. Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Humbirdston?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
And Chair Bernard?
Now, I swear you just said Chair Savas. Anyway, it's fair with aye. Motion carries unanimously. Everyone's the chair today. All right, the next item is Gary.
Oh, next is the consent agenda, and I'll ask Christina to please.
I won't call anybody chair on this consent agenda. Okay, so the consent agenda today, Health Housing and Human Services, approval of Amendment Number 4 to an agency service agreement with Clackamas Women's Services for system diversion, homelessness prevention, and rapid rehousing services. Approval of Amendment Number 1 to the grant agreement with Clackamas Women's Services for emergency transitional housing services. Approval of Amendment Number 2 to an agency services contract with Northwest Family Services for system diversion, homelessness prevention, and rapid rehousing services. Approval of Amendment Number 3 to agency service agreement with Northwest Housing Alternatives Incorporated for a system diversion and re, rapid rehousing services. Number 5, approval of a construction contract between Clackamas County and DND Contract and Utilities Incorporated for the Southeast Sandy ADA ramps improvement project. Number 6, approval of a contract amendment number 1 with CHG Medical Staffing Incorporated for physical, or physician, excuse me, locum tennis staffing services. Under elected officials, approval of previous board meeting minutes. Approval of intergovernmental agreement number 30496, Amendment Number 1 between Clackamas County, behalf of the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office and State of Oregon acting by and through its Department of Transportation. Under Technology Services, approval of a non-disclosure agreement between Clackamas Broadband Exchange and Zipfly Fiber. And under the Juvenile Department, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the State of Oregon acting by and through its Oregon Department of Education Youth Development Division.
Thank you, Christina. Any chair wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve consent agenda.
It's moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda. Any other discussion? Christina? Christina, please poll the chairs.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Humbirdston?
Chair Humberson votes aye.
Commissioner Savas?
As I sit at my chair, I also vote aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Well, I'm really the vice chair. Aye.
And Chair Bernard?
Aye, motion carries with all the chairs voting yes. And the thing about being a chair is people sit on you. All right, with that, we'll move on to Gary's lot.
Next is Public Communication, and Chair Twiliger will lead this.
Thank you, Chair Schmidt. And now's the time for general comment relating to any county business. If you have a comment related to county business, you can use the raise hand feature on Zoom. Or if you're calling in by phone and would like to give comment, please hit star nine now. I will give people a few seconds to do that. I do not see any emails that came through our bcc@clackamas.us email account. And I will wait for hands. I do not see any.
Wow, Chair Madkord, do you have anything you'd like to add? Want to make sure he got.
Oh, sir, but thank you for the opportunity.
Well, with that, we'll close the public hearing and, uh, Public Communications and move on to County Administrator Updates. Chair?
All right, commissioners and chairs, I always like to share some great news we have of our good staff at Clackamas County. And today I'd like to share with you three great news items. First, Clackamas Water Environment Services, or WES, reached a significant milestone recently regarding the 1.3 million gallon digester, which was successfully brought online last week at WES's Tri-City facility. Digestors convert waste into fertilizer and generate methane gas that is converted to power, which provides nearly half of the electricity used at the Tri-City facility. This new digester is a key part of the wastewater treatment process, and it supports WES's over 190,000 customers. So congratulations to our staff at WES for this major milestone. Next, our transportation maintenance crew received some very kind words from constituent Judy, who wrote, "I wanted to thank Clackamas County Road Transportation and employee Ricardo Sandoval for picking up a dead deer on Child's Road in Lake Oswego. I have nothing but praise, appreciation, and gratitude for all that you have provided over the years to our neighborhood of disposing of dead deer, not to mention down trees, lines, and other debris. You have always been prompt and gracious. It is greatly appreciated. Thank you again for all you provide to our neighborhood." So thank you, Judy, for those kind words, and thank you Ricardo and our staff at the Transportation Maintenance Division for all their good work. Finally, a note we received from Kenton, who has served as a chaplain for people in crisis, and he wrote this about our GO teams at the Clackamas Town Center. "I have served as a chaplain at six wildfires, including the Camp Fire in Paradise, the Eagle Creek Fire, the Okanagan Complex Fire in Washington, where I was asked to respond after we lost three firefighters in the line of duty. I also served as a chaplain at the Oslo Mudslide that took 43 lives and at active school shootings. I served Clackamas County as the lead fire chaplain for Clackamas Fire and for one of our search and rescue teams, and for seven years has served as our nine, served our 911 dispatchers through some very tough stuff. I won't bore you beyond that, but I'm noting and saying it that I have never seen such an easy-to-work team of disaster mental health professionals as I have the GO team members at Clackamas County. I have never worked with a, a team like yours that brought the level of maturity, concern, and professionalism, which still maintain a flexible, a flexible and servant-hearted style of leadership. My hat is off to Stephanie Jefferson, as she led that team to assist evacuees at the Clackamas Town Center. Thank you for sharing them with us. So thank you to Chaplain Kenton for that amazing note, to Stephanie and the other members of our GO team and our Health Housing and Human Services Department for their fantastic service. Those are my updates today, Chair."
Thank you, and we'll start with Commissioner Communications. Paul, you're up. Your mic, Paul.
Your mic, Paul.
Yes, I've been, uh, speaking to you all, kind of giving you updates as we go along. And, uh, for those who are watching this, kind of at least have the opportunity to kind of get an update. Uh, on Monday evening, we had a, um, at the Region One Area Commission on Transportation, which is really a, um, an advisory committee to the Oregon Transportation Committee, um, and on, on transportation issues. Uh, we are in very, um, interesting times because, um, there is both a statewide, a region-wide, and a localized effort to look at perhaps tolling every, every road, every highway in the region, um, essentially. And, um, I don't know if that is going to be proposed to be statewide or that simply is going to be, uh, Clackamas County and Washington County and Bemum County. And when I hear some of the other organizations such as Metro, um, for example, speak about the purpose, the reason that they want to do this is to change behaviors, and behaviors in particular, you know, encourage people not to drive. You know, that means that people need to have an alternative, um, obviously, if they need to get to a doctor's appointment or take their child somewhere. Or frankly, the most obvious one is getting back and forth to work. And with our, uh, jobs, housing imbalance in Clackamas County, uh, we obviously have a lot more homes than we have jobs. And so therefore, people need to drive out of the, out of the county every day. So that, that could be a severe burden to everyone in our area, financial burden. And, uh, that concerns me when there are no alternatives. So if, again, um, I think the question at the end of the day is, um, you know, how is Clackamas County residents going to be affected if the effort is change of behavior and, and we are not provided those alternatives? I think this puts everyone in a very precarious position. And, um, I think you, everyone needs to be speaking to their legislators. I would say write a letter because as I understand it, there may be an effort to, um, see, uh, laws change at the state legislature, um, come this legislative session, which runs between January and, um, and June 30. Uh, so that's, uh, that's something I want to, I'll be keeping everyone apprised of. I, I think with all of the fees, um, related to transportation, um, measures and so forth that have been passed, that that burden might just be overwhelming. I, I just don't think that, uh, we all ought to be punished for, um, for the shortcoming of, of, of providing the infrastructure, whether it's adequate-sized roads or highways or lack of transit or transit investments like bus, um, and sidewalks and shuttles, all those things. We should be punished for the region's lack of investment, especially as severely unders- under, facilitated in those areas as Clackamas County as compared to the other three counties. That's what I have for today. I wish everyone a, uh, a, a safe, uh, weekend and, uh, gratitude out to those 320-some-odd firefighters that are, um, out there every day fighting these fires. You know, I think, uh, a lot of us look out the window and see that things are better and, and there's no evacuation levels, and we just kind of think that it's kind of all over. But, um, those pe- folks are out there working hard every day, putting their lives on the line, and, um, we should recognize that they're still out there fighting to keep our, um, to keep our area safe. Um, so that's what I have for today. Thank you.
So Paul, I have a question, maybe Sonya has one too for you. But when you said all roads, you mean freeways and major roads? Because I'm not gonna have to pay a toll on New Era to get to my house.
Well, um, so met, uh, there's three studies that are happening currently. And, um, and so one of them is the city of Portland. One of them is Metro. So Met- Metro's boundaries include half of Clackamas County. So your road, New Era Road, may not be unless it goes statewide. And then, uh, and then, uh, the state is looking at, and we'll learn more on December 1st. Uh, they're looking at what's called CCMP. Conge- it's basically congestion management plan, and they're gonna, they're gonna introduce what that is. So it may not be New Era, Jim, but it might be 99E. So it's, i- if you choose to take 99E, or it could be Highway 213. So in the rural areas. So I don't know if it's gonna be statewide. I don't know if it's gonna be all the state highways. Um, I, and but clearly, the metro study is, as I understand it, all the roads in the urban, in the urban growth boundary or Metro's boundary. So, so if that helps, um, and like I said, we'll get more clarity come, um, come December. But I think it's kind of interesting that a lot of this bad news, um, apparently is being, uh, is gonna be introduced after the election.
All right, Sonya, did you have a question?
Oh, I really appreciate your updates and all the work you're doing on transportation. I, I was in London a couple of years ago during the break, and I was really amazed at how they dealt with, um, congestion. And of course, they have amazing public transit going into London, but they basically kind of put a circle around all of London and says, "If you're going into the city in a car, you have to pay for it." So that really changed behavior. But I guess the question that I have is, what are we doing as a county to put our needs on the map as far as what we need for alternative modes of transportation? It is ridiculous that you can live in Estacada and it takes you so long to get to Clackamas Community College. I mean, we don't have the connections that we need for our residents that don't have a car or need to have another form of transportation. So how are we really promoting, um, what we need for alternatives to drive?
Well, thank you so much for that question, and I, that's, just just provides a great opportunity. So, um, I, as you know, the Clackamas County Court of Energy Committee, which is made up of, of our, our city leaders as well as our county leaders, we talk about these things, and we've been talking for years about transit because a number of the cities want, need, want and need transit for their areas. And because unlike probably London and Stockholm and all these cities, Clackamas County's land, topography, um, is not easy, right? It's not easy to walk up and down, um, and there's not a lot of connections, there's no shuttle. So we're not really Stockholm, we're not London, we're not even downtown Portland, frankly, which is flat. But, um, so we've been working on that and, and asking Trimet for a number of years. But recently, when HB 2017 came out, which is the House bill that the legislature passed, the governor signed the bill, um, it included language in there about tolling, and that's when that conversation began. So right out of the gate, um, I, on behalf of the commission, and I've given you all updates, have reported, um, on efforts to, you know, we really need to get in front of this transit issue. If you're going to, if the goal is to change behavior, we need to have the alternatives. So been pushing hard, I've been pushing hard at the regional tables for this. Uh, the, the transit committees that I sit on, I've been pushing hard. I asked for a region-wide study. I asked Trimet and our, and our, uh, regional leaders for a region-wide study on, uh, transit, um, service, um, levels so that we can figure out where we need it, where are the holes, what, what areas need it that don't have it? And where, and so we can balance the system out. Well, uh, there were no takers. Uh, no one was interested, so I brought this back to the county, and our county staff initiated a Clackamas County Transit Study. We'll have that completed here in like a month or two, so we're pretty excited about that. We'll find out for Clackamas County where we don't have the service, where we do have it, and maybe identify some needs. So those are some efforts, and we're gonna share that with C4, we're gonna, we're gonna share that with the region, frankly. And, um, and so the conversation on trans is really ramped up, uh, when we make investments, when we look at roads, should we put, you know, transit facilities such as, uh, transit stops, bus stops? Should we put bus-on-shoulder facilities? And so we're, we're having conversations, having a conversation with Tuolotin right now on adding some transit services between Tuolotin and Oregon City. So we're all having these conversations, but it really boils down to money. Where's it, where's the dollars come from? And Trimet has indicated to us that they don't have the funds to add new service, period, let alone Clackamas County. So we're, we're, we're stuck, we're really, really are stucks. So we really need to get in front of this somehow, if that helps answer the question.
Yeah, thank you. I'm excited for, to get the information from the study. And then I am hoping that we can really strategize instead of saying, hey, don't do this until we have, you know, because there's such a, not an investment in the region, let's figure out what investments, to use this as an opportunity to get the investments we need for our residents that live in Clackamas County. And really prioritize these pieces because it's ridiculous that people can't, especially young people that, that want to go to school, that it takes them so long to go to the hubs of our community if they live in other places. That's just not okay, not okay. So really appreciate your work, Paul. Thank you. Sorry for hijacking the meeting, but, um, on this issue, but it's just so important. And I appreciate Chair Bernard, you allowing the deeper conversation.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll just cap it off with, with, with one thing. And that's why I was so disheartened with the fact that, um, this transportation measure, the metro transportation measure does not include any new service lines or, or provide any new transit anywhere in the county. And, and that's, that, I think, for that investment, um, um, we ought to have some improved, uh, uh, um, added transit corridors or something, but there, there aren't any.
All right, Ken.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I, I, I agree with Paul's assessment on this, on these transportation issues, and just add one little tidbit to that, and people don't oftentimes realize that, uh, over 85% of the cost of operating transit is, is paid for via taxes. It is not paid for by, uh, riders, uh, paying for, for their, for their service. So when he's, when Paul mentions the, the costs and where does the money come from? He's right on the money, so to speak, no pun intended. And that is a key, uh, critical part of the problem. This week has been busy, uh, I, once again, delivered food to the senior centers. And I can tell you that the, the three senior centers that I deliver to are very, very appreciative of the food that we are providing for people. Uh, there's no question about the need out there in our rural communities, uh, and they do appreciate the help that Clackamas County and the food banks are providing, uh, for them. Went on a jail tour the other day with Commissioner Fisher, and, um, I was very pleased and impressed with the conditions in the jail and the, quite frankly, the staff that run that jail should be commended. They are really at the top of the game, um, and the leadership there is nationally recognized, uh, for his competence in, uh, running a jail. There is one new program since the last time we toured that I'd like to bring forward that I think is just an extraordinarily, um, good decision on their part, and it costs us nothing. Every inmate in that facility has access to the crisis hotline at any time. That, and it does not cost a dime for that service to be there. Can, when you consider how it may be very difficult for somebody to want, be willing to talk to one of the deputies in the jail if they're upset about something, and they have this opportunity, the, the, the ability to have somebody to talk to and get depressurized before it becomes a suicidal issue or a confrontational issue with a deputy, that is, that is really, really, uh, advanced thinking on, on the jail's part, and they should be commended for this program. Quite frankly, we're really lucky to have, uh, a team like that, uh, running a maximum security facility like they do. Went out on another fire tour, this time it was, uh, well east of Estacada, on the Riverside Fire. And we weren't looking at burned houses, we were looking at burned forests, and it is incredible the amount of damage that was done. I'll share some pictures, uh, on Facebook about that for people later. But I did go with, um, Representative Schrader. And so we had a conversation on a few subjects. And I let him know that, uh, our concerns about the tolling issue, particularly for the 205 interchange area that, that, that we're talking about, that six-mile stretch, and the unfairness of placing that burden on Clackamas County residents. And made the point quite clearly, which he agreed with, that 205 is a federal responsibility, and the federal government is the one who should be paying for those, um, those improvements, quite frankly. So, uh, he, he was certainly not in disagreement with that. I reminded him of our application for, uh, funds for the Bull Run Bridge. Now that it is weight limited, it's, um, obviously problematic for large vehicles, especially emergency vehicles to, to, uh, service that area. So hopefully that grant will come through. I made it clear that we were very displeased with the way the CARES funds were, uh, passed out and how, how that has impacted our community and our businesses, and that if there is another CARES package of any kind that comes out, that not happen that way again. Uh, he was in agreement with that, he felt that it was unfair to Clackamas County. And a real focus is, real focus needs to be on our business community so that they are not completely devastated and, and that they can begin hiring people back. And that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ken. Martha? Your mic.
You know, I've been seeing a little dog that jumped on my lap and on the table, uh, during the meeting, so I hope that humanizes how we work at home. Yeah, it's been a busy week, uh, for me as well. Yesterday, Commissioner, Commissioner Fisher, and I think you were there, Commissioner Savas, we attended the District Eight meeting. Um, it was really a good conversation where we talked about how we are going to align our mutual needs at the next legislative session. And, uh, in particular, I was able to give, uh, a brief overview of the wildfires that we have experienced here in this county that have been so catastrophic. And, uh, did ask folks to keep an open-minded as we move forward with the cleanup and all the other dollars we're getting from FEMA, that one of the discussions that needs to happen is, uh, forest management. So I did ask my colleagues to please keep an open mind as the Association of Oregon Counties, uh, under their public lands umbrella is going to move forward, I, I suspect with the discussion. So we can really get a good way to manage our forests to prevent, um, the large-scale kinds of fires that we have experienced, um, this year. So that was a good discussion. Um, and I did also find out evidently I am a lifelong member of the board now, which I hadn't quite anticipated, but, um, I guess I'll be there for, uh, quite a while. Like it or not, that's what happens when you're past president. They, they put you on the shelf, but only partially on the shelf there. So, uh, and also this afternoon, I've been working with Dave Budney and a group of folks, uh, from the Clackamas Watershed Group, and we are planning a conference at the end of this year that's going to be talking about our watersheds, uh, how we keep them clean, how we keep them healthy. And we'll be pulling in experts from all around the region, as well as we hope some national expert, experts as well. This will all be done virtually, and, um, I think it's an important piece of what we do here in Clackamas County because our watersheds are, um, so critical to our public health. Which brings me to the Oregon City Measure Dash 3.562. Uh, that is the measure that Wes is putting forward, and I've been working on that campaign with Wes and, uh, Shelley Perini and those folks. And that is the measure that's actually going to move, we need approval to have an outfall, uh, the footprint of an outfall, um, from the, uh, from the sewer system itself to the, uh, river, to the Willamette River. And it is going through some property that has tribal significance and things of that sort. So, uh, they have done, Wes has done a phenomenal job working with all the stakeholders, and this is not just going to benefit, um, Oregon City. This is actually going to be a critical piece of the entire system. It's been endorsed by, let's see, the Oregon City Business Alliance, the Oregon City Chamber of Commerce, Clackamas County Business Alliance, and the North Clackamas Chamber of Commerce because basically it will increase the capacity of the infrastructure. And the good news is, um, that people should be, uh, somewhat happy about is that it does not increase property taxes. So, um, when you get it, when you get that, I mean, I hope that Oregon City, uh, folks will move ahead with a yes for that. And I think, Gary, if I'm not mistaken, that, um, we are going to have a presentation about this, I think, from Wes, sooner than later, are we not?
At next Thursday's business meeting, yes.
Okay, so we'll get up to speed with that. And lastly, um, with all the trauma that we have been suffering here, um, in this county with, between COVID and wildfires and civil unrest, uh, I have been thinking a lot, I know that, I wanted to thank Chair Bernard. He made a very, um, wonderful statement against white supremacy, um, during our last meeting, which I think that we all, all of our colleagues feel the same way, that white supremacy is absolutely abhorrent. So what I did was I took a look at, um, some of the literature that has been put out by the Department of Homeland some of the literature that has been put out by the Department of Homeland Security, in particular Chad Wolf, who is the Homeland Security Secretary. And what the report says is very chilling. It says that white supremacist extremists will remain the deadliest domestic terror threat to the United States. And that since 2018, attacks have increased more than any other time. There is a longstanding intent to target racial and religious minorities, members of the LGBT community, politicians and members of our black community. And it is really exceptional that this has risen to the level of these being our own, unfortunately, homegrown terrorists. It's a cancer on our society and our communities that we need to work very diligently against. The other piece of information from the report was that legitimate protests throughout the nation, not just Portland, have also been overtaken by anarchists, which is putting the legitimacy of the protesters, the people who are protesting peacefully at risk, as well as the folks who are law enforcement. And they have heard reports of law enforcement officials, you know, beginning to throw rocks, bombs, hit with pipes, things of that sort. That is not just happening here. That's happening across the United States where all of these protests. So as we move forward in our attempt to work for peace and justice in our community, I think our role is going to do the best we can to build community by listening to people. We really cannot allow this kind of civil unrest to undermine what we can be and what we should be as a nation, as a state, and as a county. And I believe I work with colleagues who feel the same way, and that will work. We will work together as a commission to really bring stability, care, love, and decency back to our communities and to the civil discourse that we must have as American citizens. So thank you for that. That was my statement. This is a personal issue for me. I have a, I think I've mentioned this before. I have a mixed race family. So I, I like to think occasionally, at least I talk from some experience, although I, I have not always experienced, probably have an experience, the same level of pain and exclusion as other members of our community. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Sonya?
Commissioner Schrader, thank you for that. I've been thinking a lot about Chair Bernard's statement and our conversation last Tuesday. And the definition, Commissioner Schrader, I think you read it during the last meeting. The Merriam-Webster dictionary has the definition of white supremacy as the belief that the white race is inherently superior to other races and that white people should have control over people of other races. And with that, Commissioner Schrader, I don't know where you went. You probably went to get your doggy. But I'm hoping that as I posted Chair Bernard's statement on my Commissioner Fisher Facebook page, if you'd be so kind to give me all those words that you said. I think the context from homeland security is really important. I really appreciate your artful way of, of describing it. And I would really like to, you know, Chair Bernard's statement could be part one in yours, which takes it a bit further, and definition could be part, part two in my support for these perspectives. And I just want to thank you for your thoughtfulness and for taking the time and really put into words what I think is very important.
Well, and if I can just make one more comment. The issue with this is that it's been, it's really been brought to the level of, of civil, of terrorism. That is a deep concern to me. And I don't think we have any space for homegrown terrorists in our own country. Nor do I think that folks that are anarchists are being, are also in a way upsetting the balance of what we need to be as citizens. And so I would like to make sure that both those issues, and you can find the document. It's been, it's, it's actually pretty remarkable, so anyone can read it. So we really need, as leaders, to really work hard to maintain common dignity in the face of such great civil unrest that we have not experienced since, I think, at least since I was a child, when we were growing up in the sixties and seventies. So thank you for that. I'll try to get you some words. But as usual, most of this for me is just me speaking from the heart. So I'll have to figure out how to do that anyway.
Very, very well said, and I would really like to share that with as many people as possible because I think it's what's beautifully said. On another note, speaking about the Clackamas County and our uniqueness and what we care about, I have been working along with, I know other, I know Commissioner Schrader's been involved. I know Commissioner Savis has been involved with the Children's Safety Levy. And we are kind of down to the wire and the home stretch of raising the resources, getting volunteers on board. I have my lawn sign that was delivered to my house yesterday. I continue to make phone calls with community leaders to talk about it. And, and my, gosh, how long have I been involved as an activist? Probably 30 years now, I think. Starting off with issues regarding developing disabilities, I have never seen so much consensus and support for a cause in my public or advocacy life. People really care about our kids and really, really support this effort. That being said, I'm still very, very nervous because I believe that our businesses and our community kind of hitting a tipping point of too many asks out there. There's been a series of increases for businesses. The Get Moving 2020 measure, which would involve a payroll tax for businesses that I believe are over 25 employees, is a very difficult, something to swallow at this time. There's a lot of effort out there to defeat that measure. And I am really concerned that if our residents aren't informed and aware of what the Children's Safety Levy does for kids, that we might not make it over the finish line. But I'm going to keep working hard. I appreciate all my colleagues' support on this. If you looked, did anybody look at the voters pamphlet on this measure? We had so many entries, and there wasn't one in opposition. So this is our opportunity, really hope that it passes and encourage all of you to jump on and get involved. There's so many activities, and you can do them all from the comfort of your, of your own home and you, in front of your computer. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Ken, you had a question or comment?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to share something with, with the board and the public. I just got a report from the Amateur Radio Emergency Services Group that provides amateur radio services both in Clackamas County and around the state and helps out in things like wildfires and other kinds of emergencies. So if I could have one minute, I'd like to share some of their numbers.
Go ahead.
So in Oregon, there are 720 members of this organization, 210 what they call nets that provide this emergency services. They had 79 training sessions this month. There were 10 public service events, 25 actual emergency operations this month, and a total number of 3,000, where is it here? 3,581 volunteer hours helping out and or training for emergencies, both in our county and throughout the state. And I am proud to say that the, the leadership of the Ares Group in the state is headquartered right here in Clackamas County with a personal friend of mine named David Kidd, who's, who's been keeping these guys in shape and doing this for quite a number of years. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'm, I'm last. I just want to say I'm, I'm very proud of the work that the county's been doing. I think that, you know, if you have been impacted by the fire, you seriously should consider visiting our website and signing a permission to enter the property. You know, it's free. It's, it's an opportunity to make sure that hazardous waste is disposed properly. And there's no reason to distrust that the folks entering your property will just focus on disposal of hazardous waste. You know, COVID-19 has really made 2020 a challenging year for all of us. I don't see an end to this. But we need to take a look at how we're dealing with the virus and see if there's something we can do to slowly move the county and the rest of the state forward, get our kids back in school and people back at work. And I want to assure you that our folks at the county, Dr. President, Philip, and Nancy, and Carrie, and all of us are working hard to make that happen. With that, you, like Paul said, be safe, stay healthy, and have a great weekend. And don't overwork yourself. Thank you. We're returned.